Call the June 1st, 2020, Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to Order. The Clerk will call the roll.
Arivolo?
Here.
Burrington?
Here.
Frank? Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Radcliffe? Radcliffe? Absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Aiden, participation?
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance, United States of America, due to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, hear our prayer. We are living in a time beset by many challenges. COVID-19 virus, and now, once again, the ugly specter of challenging race relations in our world has reared its head. We have those, most of us in the world, who worked hard all our lives, raised strong families, and pay attention to your teachings. We have some that would take advantage of others in times like this. We are dedicated to stand with those who believe that peace is the answer, and solving problems thoughtfully and carefully is the way to do that. Not to incite people to violence, cause damage to businesses that people have worked their lives to create, that nurture our communities. We ask that you stand with us, Lord, and give us guidance, and give us hope. Why must we always do harm before we heal? Help lead us in a different path, Lord, recognizing the dignity of all men, and help us make America the place that we have always dreamt it is, and that we want it to be again. Thank you, Lord, amen.
Amen.
I think we had a couple people join the meeting. Tom, are you here? Who else was missing? Okay. All right, so, we have eight. First up, under public comment, we really don't do public comment the normal way. We typically have it furnished with a letter, but can we allow someone to speak under public comment? Attorney Drellin? Well, I have Andy's, and I was going to read that under Special Messages and Proclamations. Maria, you're here for a reason. Would you like to tell me what you wanted, what you came to the meeting for?
We're looking to see what we're, for the restaurant, we're looking to see what we can do outside, the tables, and stuff like that.
Okay, there are, we have developed specific guidelines, and you can check with Mike and Gina, and they can help you with that. Also, okay, first up, I have approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of May 18th, 2020, as presented. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that.
By Arivolo, second by Stevens. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Aiden, favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under public hearing this evening, we have none. Under Special Messages and Proclamations, Andy Race has presented me with a letter and an announcement to remind us all that Boone County Council on Aging invites everyone to Spring Is In The Air at the Belvidere Moose on Monday, June 15th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. A drive-through pickup meal of roasted chicken breast, mashed potatoes and gravy, coleslaw, glazed carrots, bread and butter and brownie will be presented for a dinner price of $15. There are six raffle tickets included with the meal. Everybody come on out and support Boone County Council on Aging. Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Chief has something that he'd like to share with us about something that could possibly develop a little later tonight in our community. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I would go ahead and address any concerns or rumors that I'm sure the council has either heard or seen on social media about the protests, or, you know, potential for looters and riots within Belvidere. The Police Department, too, has been watching social media and kind of taking the information as it comes, and we've been developing a response and trying to be as proactive as we possibly can, not knowing if the information on social media, one, will develop into anything, or, two, if there's any legitimacy or reliability to it. So, we're taking it minute by minute, and we are gathering as much information as we possibly can. We're keeping in touch and communication with businesses and the public as best as possible. Perfect example is, we have information regarding groups of individuals coming on buses from the Chicagoland area, and that's supposed to be this evening sometime. In response to that, the Police Department is working with Illinois State Police, and in an attempt to diffuse that before they're able to come to our community and cause any type of damage, or, you know, pillage any of our businesses, we've gone ahead and requested that the Illinois State Police shut down the on-ramps, or the off-ramps from I-90 to Belvidere, both westbound, at Genoa and Irene. There hasn't been a time that we've designated for ISP to release those off-ramps. So, at this point, it's until further notice. We have put out on our Facebook page to hopefully let the community of Belvidere know if they happen to be traveling from the Chicagoland area back home, so they understand and know that they may have to take an alternate route to get back to the city. We had information that there possibly could have been a protest this evening, and we've been monitoring both the communication and the potential for that group to gather. We're monitoring that information minute by minute, and developing and reacting as the information changes. So, you know, it's one of these situations that, you know, is uncertain. It creates a lot of concern within the community, a lot of uncertainty, and we're going to do the best that we can to make sure that we keep our community a place that's going to be, you know, still be a safe place to live, and we are going to respond with measured force, reasonable force, and necessary force, if necessary. But we also want to make sure that those that are coming to our community, or who live within our community, that want to have their voices heard and want to gather to provide others with awareness, that we'll work with them. You know, we're not here to, you know, be the competition. We're here to work with those that want to do those things peacefully, and we want to be able to provide an atmosphere where that's possible. But, you know, unfortunately, with what we've seen nationally, on a national level, and even both, both regionally as well, with those peaceful protests comes individuals that mean to do a community a disservice. And we're prepared for that. We have a strategic plan. We're actually working with the Fire Department, who's been a great partner, but one partner that we can't do without, and that's our community. We can't do this by ourselves. We need everybody within our community. If you see something, say something, and we've had a great response with that so far. And a lot of the intelligence that we've been able to gather has gone, come from the community, and so it is something that is working, and, you know, I just want the community to know that this is something we're taking seriously. We're going to do the best that we can to provide the best service that we possibly can, and we're taking things as they come, and we're going to do the best we can, and we appreciate all of the help and support that we've gotten so far.
Thank you, Chief. As things develop, and we need to reach the public, we'll reach the public through the department's Facebook page. If we need to find other ways to reach the public, we will develop those methodologies as, as we can. Under number seven, approval of expenditures this evening, we have none. On number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers, I have minutes of the committee of the whole Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of May 26, 2020, as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Clayton.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Burrington?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Aiden, favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Under number nine, unfinished business. First up, we have A, Ordinance 492-H, a second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the sale of municipal parking lot, the former Manly Lot. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo, second.
I'll second that.
By Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
Yeah, Alderman Burrington?
Yes, Alderman Burrington.
Yeah, thank you. I actually spoke to some individuals from the community voting board, and their board has not met yet on this item, and they have not signed off on it, and they would appreciate if we could table this or send it back to committee. So, I'm going to make a motion to refer this back to committee, and before I do that, I'm definitely not going to vote yes on it, they just want some more time on it. So, I'd like to make that motion, please.
Alderman Burrington, do you want to refer to committee, or if you're just waiting for them to act on it, do you simply wish to table it at council so it doesn't have to go back and forth?
I can't hear you too well, but I want to send it back to committee.
You can table it at council, and then when they approve it, it'll already have been motioned and seconded, and all we'll have to do is vote. Alderman Burr.
Okay, we can do that for now. I'll make a motion to table.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, have tabled until we, all those in favor of tabling signify, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Aiden, favor?
So, it is tabled.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Under B, Ordinance 493-H, a second reading, it's an ordinance temporarily abating a portion of the fees imposed pursuant to Section 14-454 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Frank. May I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
Alderman Snow has a question.
Yes, Alderman Snow, please proceed.
I missed, obviously, I missed last week's discussion on this, but, so, if somebody, I assume all the renewals are May 1st, and if somebody comes in generally before this occurred on, we'll say, February, and wanted to get a license, they would pay the full $500, and then have to renew in May for the next 500, is that correct?
If you were to grant your request to discuss committee last week, the idea of prorating for new applicants, that's actually was discussed and shows up later on this agenda as a new ordinance modification.
This is just for the regular proration for the people who already have existing?
This simply addresses the renewals, you're correct. The item number, A, on a number 10, new business, is a new ordinance that's up for first reading later on, that seeks to accomplish what you wished to put on the agenda for last week.
Right, but what is my answer, since I'm not going to get a, a chance to talk during the first reading? What, what is the protocol for the scenario of a new applicant, generally speaking?
Currently, they pay their per machine fee, and then they would renew the subsequent, I believe it's June 1, actually, or is it May 1? May 1. The modification that's being proposed later on tonight's agenda for consideration in two weeks would to make that prorated as well.
Thank you.
So, any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Frank? Aiden, favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to item C, Ordinance 494-H, a second reading, it's an ordinance granting a special use to allow a daycare center, three-plus children, within the general business district at 435 South Town Drive. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Frank. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Motion seconded by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
Aiden, favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next, under D, we have the appointment of Matthew Flurry for the Ward Number Four Alderman. It was tabled May 18th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to remove it from the table. Motion by Alderman Frank.
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor to remove from the table? Hearing not all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
No.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion is removed from the table. We already had a motion and a second to approve the appointment, so, all those in favor, when your name is called, if you're in favor, signify by saying aye; if you're opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Aiden, favor?
Matthew Flurry's appointment as Ward Four Alderman is unanimous. If you'll come forward, we will swear you in, sir. Congratulations.
Okay. When I raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Matthew Flurry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Alderman.
The duties of the office of Alderman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulate.
Do the first to congratulate. Okay, moving on to number 10, new business. We have a couple of first readings. Ordinance 495-H, a first reading ordinance revising Ordinance 446-H, the 2019-2020 budget ordinance for the City of Belvidere, Illinois. This is a first reading. It's a silent reading, but I read it into the record for the folks listening at home. Under B, we have Ordinance 496-H, a first reading, an ordinance providing for temporary relief from the full requirements of Section 98-12A-3, the City of Belvidere Municipal Code for fiscal year 2021, 5/1/2020 to 4/30/2021. Again, a silent reading. Under item C, we have a motion to waive the two-week layover of Section 2-87 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code with respects to Ordinance 496-H, an ordinance providing for temporary relief from the full requirements of Section 98-12A-3, City of Belvidere Municipal Code for fiscal year 2021, 5/1/2020 to 4/30/2021. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a, I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
So, Attorney Drellin, I noticed in this ordinance, 496-H, there is nothing that pertains to the Echo Phase III under the businesses plan, bars and restaurants are still to maintain the social distancing requirements, meaning tables should be six feet apart from one another, and from sidewalks. Are we going to enforce that? I mean, six feet apart on Buchanan Street for tables is not going to allow for many tables.
That's in Section 4, Alderman Freeman. That's in Section 4 of the ordinance. Section 98-12A-3 is modified to provide that the permitted sidewalk cafe must comply with all restrictions, regulations, laws of Boone County Health Department, DCEO, which is the agency that put forth those Phase III requirements. But this would allow them to.
Everybody on, they all know that they have to be six feet apart?
Yes, we've actually passed out pamphlets with the Phase III requirements from DCEO to bar owners that were opening this weekend, that already opened under our previous codes. So, yes, they're aware of it, and they're available. By drafting it this way, as we move to Phase 4, and DCEO changes their, their rules and their regulations to relax them a little bit, that simply then allows us to move right into that new phase without having to readapt this ordinance.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments concerning motion now on the floor?
And again, Mr. Mayor, this is simply the motion to waive the two-week layover requirement. The ordinance will actually be considered in the next agenda item.
Understood. We want to move this right along, because we need to do it formally, so they can continue to operate as they are. All those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. So, does that solve our issue then, attorney, formally? We've, we've waived and we've approved the ordinance. Okay. So, I need another motion to approve Ordinance 496-H, second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion, final motion now on the floor.
Alderman Snow.
Yes, Alderman Snow.
As I was reading through, I gathered that bars are going to have to have the 50% or an establishment, I should say, is going to have to have 50% of revenue from food?
No, that is incorrect. We've removed that temporarily from the ordinance. That is accomplished in, forgive me, I'm looking through the ordinance, but we did remove that requirement. Now, that's accomplished in Section, in Section 9. It was simply taken out of the ordinance for the time being.
That's to comply with the governor's and IDPH's rule, so that bars would have a chance to also reopen and serve alcohol outside. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burrington?
Aye.
Frank? Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Ordinance 496-H is approved unanimously.
And, Mr. Mayor, I misspoke a moment ago. The section waiving the 50% requirement that Alderman Snow referenced is actually in Section 7 of this ordinance.
Okay. Is everybody clear? Okay, that brings us then to another silent reading of Ordinance 497-H, first reading, amendment to Section 14-454 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. It's the video gaming for future proration. We'll come back. Next, we have motions forwarded from the Committee of the Whole, Public Safety, Finance, and Personnel of May 26, 2020. The motions will be presented by Vice Chairman Burton. Vice Chairman Burton, you have the floor.
A motion to approve a proposal from Iowa Environmental Incorporated.
A motion to approve a proposal from Ironwood Environmental Incorporated in the amount of $5,500 for the removal of asbestos tile flooring for the upstairs remodel at Station Number One. This work will be paid for from the Building Repair Maintenance Line Item Number 01-220-6010.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Frank. Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to...
Your Honor, I have a question, Alderman Snow.
Okay, Alderman Snow, please proceed.
I had an inquiry, and I did touch base with Mr. Drell, but he hadn't gotten back to me. What is our present stance on garage sales in the community during this timeframe?
I can address that, Mayor. I am trying to finalize the research. From what I can tell, and I have not verified this with DCEO yet, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, it seems like they may have pelted this issue, the local governments. Apparently, some governments have allowed garage sales with respect to social distancing requirements, you know, 10 or fewer because it's small spaces, face covering, things like that. I'm going to verify that DCEO did, in fact, give that discretion to the municipalities, and if that's the case, the mayor's already indicated that he has no problem so long as people follow the general requirements for retail establishments.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
On that last motion, on my memo from Chief Heiser, there was a recommended amendment to it to reimburse the 2 percent funds for that cost. Did we fail to make that amendment?
You did.
Okay, it's not in my motion.
It's not in the motion, but I'm...
So, how do we proceed legally here, Attorney Drell?
Why don't we do this the easy way as opposed to the hard way?
I'm all for that.
The item A, which deals with the proposal from Ironwood Environmental, Inc., and the expenditure is actually a legitimate agenda item, so I think it'd be appropriate for a member of a council to make the motion as set forth in the chief's memo, which he's about to read to you.
Okay, ask one question. Has the check been cut? So, this line item, it's all still the same. The reimbursement, everything is still going to come from...
Yeah, but they need to authorize the reimbursement to the 2 percent fund as opposed directly to the contractor. So, go ahead and read your... It's the part about the motion to amend, just say, "A motion to reimburse the 2 percent fund for the expenditure."
Recommended motion, or a motion to approve the $5,500 proposal for asbestos abatement is read. We recommend the following amendment. Motion to amend to approve the $5,500 proposal from Ironwood and to reimburse the 2 percent funds for that cost.
So, it's a motion to reimburse the 2 percent fund for the expenditure, $5,500, that they have already paid Ironwood Environmental Incorporated for the asbestos removal for the upstairs remodel at Station One.
Motion out of committee.
Now, this requires a motion and second.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Stevens. And second by whom?
Porter.
Second by Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Frank. Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to item number 11. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, second.
I'll second that.
Second by Stevens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.